Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the May 27th, 2025, meeting of the school committee, call the meeting to order 5:05. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded today. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call Manuel for the last time.
Emmanuel Garcia, student representative.
Amy Zalanta.
William Strother.
Antonella Roggelaar.
Gregory Thompson.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Sarah Trullio.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Samantha Velasquez, secretary.
Hey, thank you all. Eight minutes for approval. I would adjutant motion, please.
I move to approve the May 12th, 2025 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Amy. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. One more, please.
I move to approve the May 12th, 2025 regular session meeting.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Amy. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. Thank you, Samantha.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have committee and subcommittee communications again for the last time, Emmanuel.
Things I have was last week, our high school hosted their annual art show. It was a very nice event, a lot of talented artists there. And then today, little kids, big kid nursery had their graduation. That was a really fun ceremony and they had a great time.
Cap and gown for that, for the little guys.
Did you play in yesterday?
Oh, in yesterday? I participated in the town's Memorial Day service. It was a very nice service where we honored a lot of our veterans.
Nice. The band, in particular Manny did an excellent job. They always do a nice job bringing that ceremony home.
Very cool. Thank you, Amy. William?
Well, nothing today.
Okay.
Nothing today.
Sarah, we're on roll.
Sorry, I have to. We met with the collaborators last week, myself and Gordon. We discussed the educator recognition evening. And we also, I hope, cleared up some confusion around supplies and questions around our budget and the school's budget, schools budgets, and how we can best communicate that to administrators and teachers so everyone's aware of the monies that are available and what they should be used for.
Excellent. Thank you, Sarah. I did attend the Grin Spoon Teacher Excellence Dinner last night. Pam was there, Gordon and a few others. Always nice to celebrate, even this one was there, Antonella was there too, last week. So that was great. Anyway, that's it. Let's go for opting for visitors to address the committee. Is anybody here to speak to the committee today? Seeing none. We have recognition of East Solomon High School student representative.
So, Mr. Garcia, I'm coming over you. For the excellent work that you've done as the school committee representative, we want to recognize you, Emmanuel Garcia, student rep. East Solomon High School Committee, May 27th, 2025.
Thank you.
You should put it out on the table.
You should. That looks a lot better than the name tag.
Thank you, Amy.
Yes, Emmanuel, thank you for your time. We've had a lot of long meetings, but your input has been valuable and representing the student body also valuable, so. And we wish you the best in your future endeavors. Your talents have shown through to us and I'm sure to many others, so. Thank you for your time.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Okay, moving on, we have East Solomon High School program of studies.
Mr. Page here, fresh off the lacrosse field, or at least the sidelines. Rock us through the program of study.
Great, we are, ran down the hall.
Probably will be heading to softball after this.
Uh, maybe. So, um, do you want me to start?
Yep, please.
Okay. All right, so, um, so in terms of new courses, because obviously we present every year on a potential new courses. A number of these are just an expansion of our two-credit offerings that we ran for the first time this year opposite of our 11 and 12 grade PE. So anything where you see a two-credit offering that lists next to it, it's going to be a junior senior course listed, I'm sorry, that would run opposite of some of our 11 and 12 grade PE classes. It's just to help balance the schedule, but it also gives kids that opportunity to, you know, try something different, try something new. And it's, these courses are all survey courses and they're just really experiences and opportunities for kids to try something that's a little bit outside of our traditional curriculum. So, a number of these are in the fine arts department. Courses like Piano II, which we ran Piano I this year for the first time. Robotics and Animation, robotics course, which is kind of moving some of our afternoon programs. We have some of the robotics program into our daytime, the opportunity to explore. It's the curriculum between seven and two. And then also in the social studies department, we have Temporary Issues Course, which is a two-credit offering. It's a social studies course. And Sports Cycle, which is new this year, which Mr. Weal will be teaching next year, obviously pending approval to get that running. The other course, the other two courses that you see in here. One, we do have a Unified Culinary Course. That's an expansion of our Unified Programming. More substantial needs students are in classes with, you know, some of their Gen Ed peers. Like we ran the Unified PE course this year for the first time. Going into next year, we're hoping to offer both a Unified Culinary Course, where we have that more inclusive model. And also on the art side, Unified Music Course as well. So, again, a lot of two-credits are offered in there. And then the, we have two new Unified Courses. Create that more inclusive environment, which we've been really pushing for here at the Pledge of Allegiance. I can stop there and answer questions, then I can talk about the independent studies and some of the other senior privileges.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Page, the Unified Music, is that an expansion of the Drum Lab that they've done previous year?
Yeah, so, let's say some of the more substantial needs students, you know, we try to get them as immersed and included in the school as possible. In the past, we've run Unified, we've run a adaptive music course where sometimes students will come in if they have like an independent study and they go and help Nicole and Mr. Karen, I think Manny's actually done this. He's a great representative to kind of speak to that piece. The whole bit is to make this more concrete and schedule it so those students will be in there from September through June during that class and they can act as peer models and, you know, build those relationships with students so they have that opportunity with each other. So I don't know if you want to chime in, Manny, but it's, I love these classes. There's such a great space to be a part of and go into. And it really does just build that inclusive environment that we want here.
Absolutely. I think it was a great opportunity and worth it. And not only helps like those kids that have money, but it helps like those other, like other students because that's something that can, they can find like interest in. And I know me personally, that is something that I found interesting working with kids with special needs and it was a great opportunity for me to do that.
So, um, so yeah.
How many students will be taking these classes?
So, we have between five and 10 students on any given roster from our programs, like our life skills programs, medical programs, all this program in 1922, somewhere in that range. If you try to get more opportunities, we can kind of spread out the clusters a little bit. And then typically scheduling, we're from five to seven peer models. We try to keep the numbers on the smaller side. Just so, because you're working with a lot of levels of needs in there. But the, really the hope is that some of those peer models can also, while they're learning from each other, also be peer models and lead a little bit and do some teaching. So I think this year in our adapted PE, I'm sorry, our Unified PE course, there are six peer models in that course, so.
Good.
And that's one taught by Mackenzie Polini, who oversees our Special Olympics and the Unified Courses throughout the district.
How long are the classes?
Fifty-five minutes.
Do they give grades? Like how do they?
Yeah. It's a regularly grading course, yeah.
And it's just the teacher, the teacher that's in the class that's giving the grades or?
Yeah, so if you're looking at the PE course, it's a PE grade. It counts as their, like it's just based in PE and they get that PE credit.
Any other questions on the? You're going to go into some other stuff, things, what are we going to approve, what we want to approve the program?
Yeah, you can tell me if you want to do the whole thing together.
Is there more changes?
So this is, there's no changes to, you know, graduation requirements.
Right, so let's.
New courses, one, expand the Unified Program and also expand our two-credit offerings opposite PE.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the changes to the program study as described.
So moved.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amy. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. Okay.
Okay, so superintendent Smith did ask me to also take some time to just brief you of some of our senior privilege programs, which are just opportunities that kids have going into their senior year to, we'll just say, engage here in a different way than they have traditionally for their prior 11 years of schooling. So we have the work-study program, an internship program, our independent study program, and our dual enrollment program. And the philosophy behind that is just to give those kids an experience as they start to transition, you know, from their high school career into whatever might come next for them, you know. So, so these are privileges that have been on, we call them senior privileges because obviously kids have to be in good standing entering their senior year in order to have these. And I see a lot of value in what our students do during these senior privileges and we've run them here for a long time. So, but I think there are also things that we can do to improve and make it better. And I think there are some spaces where we're looking to maybe have some conversations around that tonight. Specifically around independent studies, maybe we went to a zero credit, which we've already kind of mapped out and I do support. But entertain any questions that people might have this evening.
Frank, do you know how many students this year participated in work-study versus internship program? Roughly.
So the 24, 25 year.
Any, just recent year.
So I have the course request for the coming year, which is what I brought. It's typically, I believe this year we had about 40 in work-study and we have about 40 projected going into next year as well.
Okay.
Internships, I don't know off the top of my head.
A lot less.
It's usually less. Internship typically means inside the building.
Right.
So internship, we've run those, like for the child nursery school, if kids are looking to get a third year of that offering, sometimes we run them in Elcat, programs like that.
Inside our building.
Yeah.
Are, do we do any external internships?
Like externships?
I guess.
Yeah. So we used to differentiate between the externship versus the work-study. We put them under the same umbrella. Basically, externship just means unpaid, or work-study means paid.
I see.
You know, so we just got to put them under that same umbrella. And we used to have that years ago, but it was like splitting hairs. So we call it one and the same now.
And then just, there were questions, I think, on the work-study in terms of the requirements for the students and what counted.
So, for a student to engage in the eight-credit work-study, which basically the last two blocks of the day, they have to complete at least five hours of work each week. A lot of kids don't have the ability or opportunity from their jobs to immediately go to work from school. So we do flex that time and allow them to complete that time at any time during the course of the week. For any student, they may have a half-day work-study, which are rare. I think we've had one in the last two years. Those students do have to have that, you know, break-to-work opportunity. Because, I mean, they would be dismissing them at like 10:30, which is a very early dismissal, you know. So I've had, in the last two years, I've had one of those students. Typically, what I'd do in those situations in order to approve it, which is pretty restrictive, I meet with the parent, I meet with the student, I meet with the boss all at the same time and we talk through expectations and, you know, I look for that certainty from the boss that the student is actually going to be engaging from 10:15 through 2 o'clock, five days a week. And also I look to see if that is a student who may be pursuing a career in that area. Because obviously if you're going to give a student a half-day schedule, there has to be a rational candidate.
Right. And what about the eight credits? Does that require parental approval or?
It does require parental approval. It's all parents sign off. We do, so Mark MacRaney oversees the program. He verifies with each employer that the student has a job and that, you know, they're going to be having that job from September through June. You know, students aren't even allowed to get enrolled fully into that course until we can verify employment.
How many periods a day is the six-credit?
So it would be four. And that's the one where, like I said, I've run one in the last two years. There was one student last year, there is zero this year.
And the eight credits, that's the last two blocks of the day?
Yes. Yeah, so with our rotating schedule, that is either on two days a week, it is two blocks, on two days a week is one block.
And who do they turn their timely sheet, their weekly timesheets into?
Mark MacRaney.
And is that who facilitates the quarterly meetings?
Yes.
And besides for that work-based learning plan, is there anything cumulative in terms of, do they create a portfolio? Is there any other accountability measure for what they've gained from the experience?
We are talking about that. We do want to align some of the work that goes to work-study program with the state's MyCat Plan, which does ask those students to put together a portfolio. I'll just be candid, we're not there yet, but it is something that we've talked about and I think they should.
Is there value in it without that reflective piece?
So I see value. We have kids who have been at school for 11-plus years. One of the things that is our job beyond the curriculum is also prepare them for the real world. We have students right now who, as seniors, only get jobs because they see work-study as an opportunity. But, you know, we have 40 kids this year who are contributing members of our community by being employed. You know, I don't know if all 40 of those kids this year would have been in work-study program or had jobs if they were forgiven that opportunity.
What are some of the places where they're seeking employment during work-study?
It's all over the place. We've had kids work simply at places like Duncan Millens. We have a student who has his own landscaping company. Different, LaFerrugina, Subway, different places in town. It varies from student to student.
I think the perception of this program is that many students take the work-study program and leave school, you know, a couple hours early and go home and then work later on.
And that does happen in some of these cases. But they also do, they do work and they do, you know, meet the expectations of the program. I'll say, this isn't a new program to me. I was a school in the 90s and I have friends who were in this program, you know. So this isn't something that's necessarily, it's something that's established here. I do see value for our kids. But ultimately, I know there are people who have concerns, so we can talk them through.
I mean, the five anytime hours, so if they're working five hours on Saturday, how is that beneficial for them to leave early every day from school?
So, we're giving them credit for the, you know, for working in a job, learning those skills, you know, participating in the workforce. There are skills that a kid gets in a job that they necessarily can't get at East Solomon High School. I think it also prepares them for the real world, so.
But they're getting those skills regardless, whether they have those two hours off or not?
If they were to go out and get a job, yes.
But I mean, if they're just working those five hours.
Right.
How is, I mean, they're, they're working anyway.
Some kids, some kids only get jobs because they want to participate in the work-study program.
So they're.
Mr. Page, the students, they're in good standing, so they have already met the other graduation requirements?
So they have to be in good standing, which means they are on track to meet all the graduation requirements. You know, for students who may be in a credit recovery program or behind on credits, have to make up certain courses, they're not allowed to participate.
And historically, students that enter into the work-study program, has it been a situation where you see students possibly failing other courses? When, do you know the history in terms of?
So, if we have a student who is falling behind in another course and they may be in a work-study program where they're, they have that time available at the end of the day, we do pull it back and they're expected to stay after and remain in the school until they.
Bring that grade up.
Till they bring that grade up. So we use our graduation coach, who has a whole, he will hold kids back and get them caught up in the classes before they, before they.
I just don't see like a lot of accountability measures on here. Like I, I don't know, I mean, I know you're saying this has been here since you went here, which is, that's nice. But I'm just saying that like without any way to measure, you know, you're saying they have, they're getting the skills. Well, how do we know without any measurement of that? Besides for the students maybe just checking in at the quarterly meetings.
So those are things we can definitely incorporate. If that's something you guys would like to have that conversation around, but if we're also talking about folding the program.
Just think, missing two hours of potential instruction daily, because it's 55-minute blocks, for five hours of work. So you're missing 10 hours of school weekly, approximately. Two 55-minute periods a day.
Well, with our rotating schedule, two out in four days, 21 blocks, but.
So.
It's probably about six or seven.
Seven hours of instruction? For five anytime hours, that just.
And eight credits. It's a lot of, it's a lot of credits to be given for that. Without taking these point of parameters around what it is they're accomplishing, how it's furthering their potential career goals, how it's helping them to take what they are learning at East Solomon High School and use it in an applicable, real-world situation. Like I think those are some of the things that if we're going to give that many credits, we need to be making considerations for because it's just, it's just a lot of credits for five hours per week. Am I?
I think it is a good program to have. But I also think that there needs to be more measures and more rigor to it.
Okay.
So would you, you said that one of the reasons that they get a job is so they can actually participate in the program, do you?
We do have some students do that, yeah.
So do you suspect if they had to have a portfolio or had to have more rigor or show some, where those skills actually are applicable, do you think that number would decrease?
No, I think, I think, I'm not, I'm not pushing back that it's adding more to the program. I'm fine with, with doing that if, if you wanted us to put together a portfolio. There's different, there's different things through the state that we can align to, that we can utilize. You know, I know, obviously, working at a folk school, you're aware of some of these things that.
Right. And I'm not trying to throw those kind of, you know, regulations that we require on that.
But there's certain, there's certain guidelines that we could potentially adhere to that could support that. And I think, I don't think anybody would push back on that piece. And I think we just have to tell the kids, this is where we're shifting to and these are the expectations that are aligned to that. So with those quarterly meetings, like right now, Mark does go through different things with them, like resume building, interview skills, things like that, when they meet. But we can definitely formalize that and make certain things get submitted and work get connected to that.
Is he teaching?
Even if it's a, even if it's like a daily, even if it's a regular journal that they can do both, you know, physically or electronically to be able to show where those skills are being applied, I think would probably move us in a direction where they could use that to create a final portfolio. And it's not that big masterpiece of thing that they need to put at the end.
Is he teaching classes too, unlike resume building and?
So, Mark, obviously, is a career counselor, right? So a lot of his work, his counseling is not necessarily teaching, but he does oversee the work-study program. And I think we could potentially embed some of that quarterly work and maybe transition it to monthly. I don't know, I don't know if we go weekly with 40 kids. But we could potentially increase the touches and also the work that would be connected to that and having, over the course of the year, compile a portfolio that they would.
So the portfolio is required for the internship?
Yes, yeah.
So why, out of curiosity, why would it be required for the internship but not? Like are there parameters that are set up within the portfolio for the internship that could be replicated for the work-study program?
I would say, I would say so.
And it's less credits?
Yeah, the, so the internship program is, I'll say, we don't have a ton of students who opt into that program. Right now, the majority of our internships are run through the child development program for those kids who are looking for that third-year experience, working with that program. We don't have a ton of internships in the building at the moment.
Because they're harder. They're harder to do.
But you also have fewer opportunities.
There's just not a lot of opportunities in our building. I don't know if it's harder. I mean, we have some kids who work pretty hard in their work-study program, so I don't want to say that, but I just, I think it's more just less opportunities.
But there's some kids that are working five hours on Saturday and still leaving early every day.
Do you have the data about, do you have that with you? I would love to see that. Like who's going where, when?
I would need Mark to sit here with me and go through that. I don't have all the specifics of that piece.
I agree. I think like if we're giving eight to, eight credits primarily, then that shows something that's.
Sixteen credits.
Data that's readily available in terms of being able to say, these students are actually going to work when they leave school versus 75% of them are working five hours on a Sunday or Sunday. Because that's, that's different.
But I think logistically, you have to have that flexibility for the students because to say that each of them will go to some job, you know, twelve to two on a Tuesday, when a lot of them work in restaurants or what's that?
But then why leave school?
Fair.
Or differentiate the credits that you're able to earn.
That you're receiving as a bonus.
If you're doing a five-hour shift on Sunday, that's great, but maybe you don't have the option to earn all of the eight credits or something. I don't know. It's a lot of credits. It's a lot of time away from the building.
Can we do like a revision of this program? And see.
Like, when you say we, do you mean me or do you mean you guys?
You.
Well, that's, I'm, I'm being just purely candid, I just want to make sure. So I can, we can definitely, you know, rework some language here.
I mean, even look at what other schools are doing and see what they have or make sure it aligns with what Desi wants and, and just make it, I don't know.
Mr. MacRaney may have connections to some of the other schools that he might be able to pull from too.
All right, you'll come back to this, because you asked you to do this at some point?
So, just so I have marching orders, are we still looking at that same number of credits? Are you looking to reduce that? I think the portfolio incorporation is very easy. I think increasing the number of meetings is very easy to do.
I think the credits are required for the time loss, right? So they probably need the eight credits, correct?
What's that?
Most of them probably need the eight because they're leaving and missing two blocks.
To graduate.
I will say.
To graduate.
I'll say the opposite. So our students have eight scheduling blocks. Our graduation requirements go to 116. Our students have 132 opportunities for credits. So every year, you could technically fill a course and still graduate. So every year, you could technically fail a course and still graduate on time, so a lot of our students in our work-study program technically don't need those credits. And they just still graduate on time, but that's not.
So they should be doing dual enrollment or something, so.
Yeah.
I know.
If it was drop to four credits, that wouldn't dissuade anyone from doing it potentially, and it wouldn't put anyone's graduation at risk.
Most, the vast majority of our students, when they enter senior year, have
Pretty close.
extra credits to play with, we'll just say. You, there are kids who, I would say, the vast majority of our students enter their senior year where they could technically, technically fail four courses during their senior year and still graduate. Just because of how our credit system is structured here.
So I would say, just take a little deeper look at that, if there is room to move the credits down, I think there's some desire to do that. If it hinders some students, then we could certainly reconsider, but look at that.
With confidence that it should not hinder students.
Okay, and then the other part would be, you know, the accountability portion of it, whether it be a.
Accountability is easy, I'm not going to dispute that or disagree with it, because we've had those conversations. We obviously just not have made them into policy, but we've had those conversations anyway about how to tighten things up, which I think we've done over the last few years. There was a time where, especially when we were semester-based, we would have large numbers of students who would be leaving half-day second semester, because they've met all their requirements, and they would engage in these work-study programs and be in those, in those five-credit situations, so we didn't.
So they actually were leaving at 10:30 when we were blocked, right?
10, 15 years ago, you have them leaving at 10:30.
When we were block scheduled.
I don't agree with that, you know, that was the model, right, that kind of came into, you know.
It would be great too, if you could see, you can redact the names, but to be able to see like what type of evaluation the employers are providing, using the Massachusetts Work-Based Learning Plan, especially because you have such a varied assortment of employers. It'd be interesting to see if there's any alignment in terms of how they're utilizing something to evaluate students. Like, are they trained on that? Like who's, I mean, if they're, but if they're evaluating our students, then there seems like there should be some kind of uniform practice around how to use the Massachusetts Work-Based Learning Plan.
Especially if that's the only tool to evaluate them.
That just seems like maybe that's like a joint quarterly meeting or something like that, I don't know. I just think like, those are some ideas maybe to back around with Mr. Macarini, because.
And to standardize the evaluation, you're saying, from the employer's standpoint.
I'm just to know that if you have somebody who owns, he said there's somebody who owns their own landscaping business. Well, if you own your own landscaping business, who's evaluating you if you're the owner?
I'm, I'm sure they're coordinated with someone else, right?
The Mark.
Mentor, yes, yeah.
But again, like that's just drastically different than if you're getting evaluated by, like a manager at, like a Dunkin' Donuts, versus somebody who's evaluating with the guidance of a mentor, like.
And like if Mr. Macarini is going to do any kind of classes like on resume building with these kids that are on, in the work-study, and just kind of skills like that with them.
Yeah.
Practice interview.
Yes.
And, and Mark does, so we have a guidance curriculum that we go through each year, where the traditional guidance counselors are the ones who push in the classrooms to talk about scheduling the college process. Mark pushes in the classrooms and goes through the job world, like careers, what might, what might be an area of interest for you. One of the things he does when he pushes into all classrooms is to talk about things like resumes and interview skills. He emphasizes that when he has those quarterly meetings, but I think we'd have to, obviously, take it to the next level, like what we're talking about. But those things do happen on the large scale with him. But I think there's more, if we're talking about 40 kids who might be just fitting this program too, to bolster and strengthen it, you know. So. So if we're looking to improve upon the work-study program, what are we looking at? I know we have a meeting in two weeks, are you looking for a recommendation when I come back in two weeks?
Is that enough time?
Maybe.
So we have the 12th, and we have the 23rd, 23rd, you can have the entire leadership team here.
Oh, that's when I'm thinking of the 23rd, that's, well, that's four weeks.
We could do the 23rd, it'd just be a longer meeting.
Yeah, I can't do the 12th, so I can do the 23rd.
Or we can schedule a separate meeting, yes.
Oh, you could do that too.
Because the 23rd is a long night for everyone, including the administrators.
We might want to separate it, secondary and elementary and do two things of it.
If we do that, then we could keep.
Then we could, then we could do that, and then you can talk about it then, we'd have to schedule a.
We'd have to schedule an additional meeting. Unless, you know, 12th might be challenging for everybody to finalize that, because we're still organizing and going through data and survey. So maybe move the 12th meeting if you don't need it, and you do two meetings, yeah, something like that.
So that week?
Yeah, that should give me enough time to, to put some stuff together and.
So ultimately, are we trying to say that Mr. Macarini, is that the person's name?
He's our career counselor, yes.
Would he, in essence, become the de facto co-op coordinator? Is that what we're asking, because we're asking them to do some additional work, to be able to monitor the kids, be able to see what they're doing, to be able to create a portfolio, to be able to check on the, the students and the employers. So in essence, we're asking him to be a de facto co-op coordinator.
He is the coordinator now.
That's what he is right now.
For the, yes, for the program.
So we're just trying to add, modifying, adding more to that.
So I'm guessing the co-op coordinator is positioned up on.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Talk to me a little bit about it.
So this, I mean, there's a, I'm thinking we probably need to, I need to come to your school and sit down and just go over with it, because there's a lot, there's a lot that's involved, they do grading, they meet with all the different employers, they do spot checks on the different, the students at the different.
Yep.
But the schedule is a lot more set, where students spend their, their week on, a week off. So one week they're actually at the, at school, and the next week, they're at the employers all day. So they, they don't come to school that, they don't, won't come to school that week.
That week.
But then the co-op coordinator is responsible for checking on them on a weekly basis, getting, getting evaluations, getting all the reports, and then actually getting grades, so they actually have to take those grades and give them back to the local teacher. So there's a lot of additional work that's required as a result, and then they're also, you know, between Destiny and MVA or something like that, they're, they're regulated to a lot of other rules.
Yeah, there, there may be pieces within there that we can utilize.
Yes, that's right.
I don't know if our program has the flexibility and that full-day opportunity, because obviously, we have kids who are still carrying six courses, you know. Yeah, I used to, I, I'd love to hear more.
Absolutely.
When you talk that piece through. I mean, obviously, having a co-op coordinator maybe even come and visit our school and sit down and talk some, do some of those things, and just point out how to. Who, who's the person over there?
Mr. Santos, yes.
Yeah, it, we get our, we get for our program.
Yes.
How do you make this work, and how does this make sense?
Yeah.
You know?
Maybe we can give Mr. Macarini the contact information.
Yeah, yeah. So it'd be good to have that starting point.
Yes. Would you be able to give it to me?
Yes, I will.
Awesome, thank you.
And we usually get our packet a few days before, so if you can actually have it in by like the 19, that would be.
Yeah.
Any other questions, concerns for Mr. Page?
Are we going over independent study?
Oh.
Right, we didn't talk about that.
Okay.
Because this one is the one that you dropped to zero credits?
This one, we'd be talking about dropping to zero credits, yes.
And who typically takes this?
It's juniors and seniors.
Or maybe the better question is, why are kids opting into like a, a study hall of sorts? And it will, do you see that that's going to decrease now that it's non-credited? Because before, they were receiving credit, correct?
They were, yep, yep. I don't think you would see a decrease.
Okay.
I think it's taking advantage of and utilizing an opportunity. So I would expect that to see a number.
And how many sections of this currently run?
So it's not running section, well, it is running sections, but it's not run as like a teaching block, it's a duty for our staff. So it's on top of the regular scheduled classes, it would be just a lot of five, this would be a sixth, which would be their, their assigned duty. I think we're projected to have six sections of it next year.
And how is it graded?
Right now, it's just a pass fail.
And it would stay like that?
Well, if it went to zero credits, it would.
It would have no grade.
It would have no grade.
So what's the typical reason why kids are opting into this?
I think it varies from student to student, some students take heavy course loads, and they're looking for ways to balance their schedules.
Okay.
You know, some kids need that space for additional support, some kids use that to go get their shelf teachers, maybe available during that time.
But that's, and here it says that's if the schedule allows it, so our, so that's not a guarantee, like I could sign up for independent study, but yet, when it gets put into my student's schedule, it might not line up with an off period for me to go meet with Mr. Struthers.
It does happen, but it's, I'll just say it's an exception at the moment. Some kids do utilize that time, leave the teachers when it's available, if they're not, they stay after school.
So taking it to a zero-credit course would happen next year?
Yeah, we, so we are prepared to do that now, if that's approved.
For next year.
So students who signed up for it this year, I think they've already put them on notice, it's going to go to zero credits.
For this year?
For next year, 25, 26.
Yeah, 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 good, okay.
Everyone content? Okay, what do you need?
Do I need to go on the independent studies, or?
I think that was part of the program of studies, we just couldn't go through the, the actual description.
Okay, all right, so the next piece is, because I don't think work-study is on that list, but I'm going to come back to you guys with a, we'll say, heat-up description of the program for independent studies, sorry.
Work studies.
Work independent studies, correct.
And it sounds like we may be moving the June 12th meeting to maybe two meetings. So you would assign to.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And then what are the enrollment numbers for dual enrollment and the early college? Because those are the other two pieces that you had placed in here for us to look at.
So early college, we're at zero, I think I've had one of those in the last two years, similar to like that half-day work-study, it's when kids go half-day college. I had one student last year who took four courses at HCC, and he was the one student who I approved for that, and he's on this year. I have known, projected going into next year, for dual enrollment, dual enrollment courses, right now, there are 20 kids who have selected it, but it's added an alternate, the reason we put it as an alternate is we have to ensure that the colleges have accepted them before we move it to a primary request.
Okay.
So right now, it's technically zero, but there are 20 kids who are interested in it.
Okay.
So the next step on them is to get accepted to the program, verify that with our counselors, and then we would put it into the dual enrollment program.
And those would be seniors, because those are the 20 that would be accepted to take those out during the school day?
A lot of dual enrollment courses now, it's unfortunate, because pre-pandemic, kids used to, we used to send kids to stick HCC all the time. Now a lot of them are online, a lot of them are asynchronous, it's disappointing. I thought when our students used to go to stick, it was a great opportunity for them, we have 20, 30 kids a year. When the pandemic hit Springfield, partnered with STCC and eliminated that program for any surrounding communities, and it just became a Springfield-only program. And that really hurt us, you know, so I think this year, we had like five or six kids who actually got into that program, versus the numbers of like 20s and 30s that we used to have pre-pandemic.
And then would we be striking the language around meeting all MCAS requirements? Or what, what is that going to look like in terms of the criteria that's on here? Is it that they're participating in the grade 10?
We can change that to participating, sorry, I didn't catch that.
No, that's okay.
Frank, you said 30, you see 30 students in the early college?
Dual enrollment, I'd say 20 to 30-ish each year, it got absolutely crushed.
Would there be a desire to have that if we had a relationship with a college that would allow us to do it, the more in-person relationship?
Stick was the best opportunity, not just based on proximity.
Yeah.
We've had kids go down as an untuck, but they pay out of pocket because it's out of state, and HCC is just too far, where kids can get there in timely fashion, like the kid who was doing it last year, going back and forth to HCC, I don't know if he was dragging safely to get here in time to get to his courses, because he was taking two in the morning, and then he tried to get here by 10:15 to get into his classes here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was tight.
Yeah.
You know, so ultimately, stick is the best opportunity for us, and I mean, we've had state reps reach out to them, and they just continue to just say no, I think they've got a model that works for them right now. And that, especially with now classes being able to go online and doing things asynchronously, like we're staying like Springfield runs programs, where kids just take them at their school through stick, so it's, yeah.
But that's early college, it's not dual enrollment. Dual enrollment is a little bit more flexible and open to relationship building with, it's not just exclusive to Springfield. Yeah, and early, I agree with you that early college students that go full-time, there is a really established relationship now with a lot of different Springfield high, you know, based high schools, but dual enrollment should be a little bit more flexible with students coming in. As opposed to the early college programming.
Person opportunities still though, even at, at stick, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, we should encourage.
Or surrounding districts, or just they reopen, that'd be used to us.
I, through dual, through dual enrollment, yes, but again, I mean, I, I think the early college piece, probably not, but I can certainly reach out as well, and, you know, where it might be of positive interest, I don't know. But I can certainly do a little bit of research and get back in touch with you for if there's a good.
Yeah, if you have anything, that would be phenomenal, because every, I will say, I don't know if our counselors reached out this year, but when they did last year, they were still told priorities were going to the Springfield students, and there may not be slots available for any outside schools. And that, that's typically the message we've gotten, so I forgot what it was, I'm sorry. So I'm a little frustrated, because we'd be a bit frustrated about not having our kids be able to go there, and people's got person courses. You know?
Anything else for Mr. Page?
The state came out with their adjusted competency determination, so is that something? Because I know we had discussed competency determination early on in the school year.
We'd have to revise the one that we passed.
Mm-hmm, and bring it back forward, so that we can get that done maybe before the end of this school year?
We'd probably do it in that same meeting.
Just so that the students who are going to be entering into their senior and junior year have a clear path of what it is going to be?
So the revised one right now is very similar to what we have proposed, it's just layers in the social studies. Of course, we just have to add that one in, so we can do that at the junior year if you'd.
That's, that's the thing.
Yeah.
When it came out, we had already posted the meeting, so we didn't add it in.
That's okay, and then we had talked about potentially looking at attendance as well, beyond this current academic year. We had thrown around quite a few ideas for ways to take what we had discussed as something that was fair for students because of where they were in their trajectory towards graduation. We had also talked about with the incoming ninth graders, looking at things like student attendance. We had quite a few, I think, ideas that we had talked about in terms of how do we take this as an opportunity? And we had talked about like making sure we had similar assessments, so that if I take ninth grade Algebra I in this section, and ninth grade Algebra I in this section, if I get a B here, it wouldn't have been a C over here with this educator. Because if we don't have uniform assessments in terms of that, and now we are, as a committee, saying that they've met those requirements and certifying it beyond just, you know, the graduation requirements, we really have to make sure that we have that continuity across grading practices for the courses that are going to count towards competency, competency determination. So I think that's something we have to be revisiting, especially for that incoming ninth-grade class, because they're the ones who will have the opportunity to have all four years work towards earning the CD.
We talked about it mostly around math, because that's where they started to develop.
We've talked about it mostly around math because that's where they started to develop the, um, the, um, common assessments. But we'd also talk about English, given that they have a new curriculum this year. That, that might be easier there as well, so you'd have the math and English covered.
And then layering in the social studies.
Social studies, we haven't talked about as much, but.
But now will.
The June meeting, should I just break forward to the state ones or are we look? I don't, I'm not gonna be prepared to layer those other components, but we've talked about those in formally. The departments are aware of the conversation.
I think the, the state competency, since that's gonna affect next year's class, we have to at least address.
Address that, but I think we need to almost have that as like almost a monthly standing agenda item. Like if we're, if we're gonna be prepared to welcome in a ninth grade class that is now gonna be held accountable to the competency determination set forward in conjunction with Mr. Page and this group, then we have to be open with those families and with those students at the onset of their ninth grade year. So if it's gonna, those are things that are gonna be impacting, you know, grading practices or assessment practices or if we're gonna consider having an attendance mark in there, those are pieces that we should be meeting on pretty regularly in order to make sure that we're on track to give that information in a timely fashion to those families and students.
Okay, let's start working on it.
Okay, you have some things, Frank, for us in the future?
Go back and watch the video and make sure I have.
Yeah. Thank you for coming tonight.
Eight, eight triple O before time.
Oh, wow.
Wow. Will it go into shootouts or?
No, let's play.
They'll just keep playing? Well, that's better than shootouts, at least they.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Good night.
Okay, uh, with that, we have concluded the review of our meeting. And if there is no other thing, I would like to change the motion to adjourn. Motion made by William. Second by Antonella, any discussion? Manny, good luck to you, my friend.
Good luck, Manny, congratulations. Been awesome this year, such a treat.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, or opposed nay, that carries five to zero, thank you, you're adjourned.